We welcome you to our council work meeting this Tuesday, October 21st at 3:30. We'll begin with the roll call, starting with Council McCain.
Patrice McCann.
George Hanley.
Carrie Garrett.
Rachel Whipple.
Becky Bogdan.
Thank you. And Councilors Christensen and Hoban are both excused unless they are travels today. It's proposed that we approve the work meeting minutes from October 7th. Any changes or objections? If not, we'll declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent. We also acknowledge and welcome Eric Percy and RCA Scott Anderson. First on the agenda, we have a report regarding our victim services program. This will be presented by our victim services program coordinator, Kim Thane and Captain Albert Patrick. Welcome to all of you.
Good afternoon. We appreciate you letting us come and give you a little update on our program. Some of you may remember that when we participate in the Boca funding, we are required to present this update twice a year to our stakeholders and that would be you. So we just, we decided that we would give you a little update, a little example of some of our success stories. And so we're going to start that by sharing some statistics with you. I am Kim Thane. I am the victim advocate coordinator. And then Becky and Estrella are our two Boca funded advocates that are part of our program. So if we could go to the next slide, I'll just share some of our, oh, of course. But we're gonna, yeah, okay. Let's do that one. Okay. So these are the cases that we have compiled beginning in January of this year through the end of September. And so this does not represent all of the victimizations that we serve or all of the services. We just chose to highlight some of the ones that have the greatest impact on our community. So for in that, what is it, nine month period, we have had 120 cases that involved adult physical assault, 161 adult sexual assault. We've had 195 cases against children. And you can unfortunately, domestic violence is still our number one victimization at 365. And then we also have a pretty high number of stalking and harassment cases at 256. So with all of the different victimizations that we have, our team, this is just a snapshot of some of the services that we have provided. So crisis intervention and safety planning, that's been 63. Law enforcement interview advocacy or accompaniment, that's 30. So that means we sat in on an interview with a detective or another law enforcement officer as support. Notification of criminal justice events, 205. So that is when we notify someone of an upcoming hearing or we give them information about the outcome of a hearing. And then protective orders and stalking injunctions, you can see that we spend a lot of our time doing that. That was 365 incidents. So the, the total services that we've provided so far is 2,820. So you can tell we're, we're busy. So now to give you a little example of some of the cases that we have helped with, I'm going to turn the time over to Becky.
I'm Becky. I can say I'm one of the full-time victim advocates here. So I'm just going to be going through a few of our like success stories or some of the more positive outcomes from the people that we've been able to help. I'll be sharing a few cases about domestic violence and then one about sexual assault before turning the time over to Estrella. So one of the cases that we helped with that was domestic violence centered. Officers brought an individual to our department who had been run off the road by her ex-husband and she had several young children with her. So obviously she was very distressed when she came. One of our advocates was able to meet with her and just do some emotional support and safety planning. They were able to submit a civil protective order for her and then eventually a criminal protective order as well. They were also able to accompany her to several court hearings, both civil and criminal. And then as the case continued to progress, her ex-husband had been violating the protective order continuously. And she started to get really fearful due to some other things that he was tracking her and that he had put a physical tracker on her car. So due to collaboration with Lehigh's Police Department, we were able to get Digi to come down here. And Digi is a canine that they have that can actually smell electronic tracking devices. So that was really cool. We were able to watch Digi work. And you could tell just like the relief and the ease that our client felt knowing that there, like her car was clear and there was nothing on there. And so then they could look at other routes to continue to safety plan. After that, we just continued to accompany her as the case progressed to court and just continued to provide that support and the emotional just support and other resources. And this was just a really cool example of how collaboration with other departments can really help our clients to feel safe and empowered. The next one, a client showed up at our department, very scared and very emotionally distressed due to the fact that her ex-partner was in prison and he was going to be released soon. He had been breaking the protective order from prison by calling her multiple times a day. And that was really scary and frightening for her and she didn't know how to keep her and her son, who was a toddler, safe when he was released. Every time she had called officers to report protective order violations, it wasn't showing up in their system, which was really weird because she had a signed copy of the protective order physically. So an advocate was able to meet with her and just provide some emotional support and just crisis intervention in the moment and then make an action plan. So we were able to coordinate with our detectives and we found out that the protective order had not been actually served at the prison. And so after a lot of emails, we got in contact with the prison warden and the protective order was able to get served so that the violations could actually be reported and those things could go on his record.
Were there any violations after he was served? Because anything that happened before service is not a violation.
Yeah. Yeah. So there was more violations.
Okay.
Yeah. He was really not following that at all. Yeah. So then anything in the future could be reported.
Yeah.
So she felt a lot better about that. And then we're also able to help her with long-term relocation efforts because she was really concerned that if she stayed in the area that you would be able to find her. And so we connected her with community organizations that she was able to work with. And we helped her over the course of several months and it was really cool to see the change in her demeanor from the first time when she'd been crying in our office and just severely distressed to when she sent a text to one of our advocates saying that she was feeling a lot more hope and resiliency moving forward. So it was really, really awesome to see. And that was largely due to our collaboration with our detectives and the prison warden and these other people that we have the opportunity to work with. And then the last one that I'll be talking about is a sexual assault case. We had a client come in who had been sexually abused by a person in a position of trust. And our advocate was able to help her get a protective order and as well as connect her to resources for therapy. Because that's one of the biggest things that our clients face is just not being able to take on the financial burden of receiving help. So we're able to get her help with that. And then because she felt supported and empowered, she had the courage to share her story. And multiple other victims who had been abused by that same person were also able to come forward and share their story and start that process of getting help. So.
Alright. So my name is Estrella. I'm one of the Spanish, full-time Spanish-speaking advocates. So I'm going to be talking about a sex assault incident. So this particular incident, we were, she, the victim was only Spanish speaking. And one of our advocates was able to assist interpreting during the interview with the detective. We were able to interpret all of the resources and provide all of services in Spanish to her. And through that relationship and number four that we were able to build with her, because we understand her language, we were able to provide services for her in her native language. We were also able to provide her with a U visa certification, which was a barrier for her in being able to access certain services. And she has come in a couple of times to our department and has shared her gratitude by paying, by sharing baked goods with us and our detectives. So that has been just really great to see that the work that we're doing is, you know, is, is great. And she's felt really appreci-, we feel like really appreciated by her sharing her baked goods with us. So this is one of the stalking harassment cases. I'm going to be discussing this particular case. There is an active, this person has an active stalking injunction, but there was continuous threats and just escalating behavior by the respondent that was happening just not only to the, to her with active stalking injunction, but to other neighbors in this apartment complex. So we were able to collaborate with our COP teams or our community oriented, oriented policing team and amend this protective order and, and this amendment process or through this amendment process that was granted by the court. Officers were able to go into the home of the respondent and they were able to confiscate these firearms that were being openly displayed to intimidate and threaten the, the community. Did you have a question? Sorry.
I did. I have multiple, a couple of friends have gone through stalking harassment issues. And they said they couldn't get protective order because the protective order required them to put down all the places they frequent. And they didn't want the people to know the places they frequent.
Yeah. So we, we can actually safeguard their information through the court. So there's like a specific document that we can fill out. That way, when they do get the protective order, it's not shared with the respondent.
Okay. So you can know for a fact when you fill that out that the stalker or harasser will not see it.
That's, that's their physical address?
No, the, the, I guess the form.
That's what we can protect?
Oh, you can't protect the places they frequent?
If, if there are places that are just that they frequent, if we can protect like a, a family member home or a place of work or a school. But we can't, anything that's public, there, there are guidelines on the distance that they have to remain away from the petitioner. And but.
Irrelevant of what place they're going to.
Right. Even with, mostly with the, the individual, the person, you know, there will be a requirement of you must stay 100 feet away. But if it's a public place, they cannot safeguard, you know, that. Also, if it's somewhere where there's an expectation that you want them to stay away and they, if they already know what that address is, you can't, you don't want to safeguard it because you can't ask them to stay away from a place that they're, they haven't been told.
It's kind of a double rally.
It is. It's kind of catch 22. So a lot depends on whether they are already familiar with that.
But the problem is they weren't trusting that this person would stay away. So they, they thought giving the address of where they, you know, frequent or that would just make him come there.
So maybe I can.
Counsel.
Sorry. Maybe I can, uh, interrupt this a little bit more. In some of these protect orders and stalking injunctions, there's specific addresses and locations that they can be prevented from going, but there are also stipulations that said that they cannot be within X number of feet of this person at any location. And if they are, then they must immediately vacate the area. They must leave or else face the sanctions. So like, like Kim said, it is a double edged sword to tell somebody, you can't go to this gym that I'm going to be at and letting them know that you're going to be at that gym.
Right.
But there are stipulations that say anywhere that you are, this person must stay X number of feet away from, which would protect them to protect.
That's still better than nothing.
Yes. So if somebody's not wanting to be a stalking injunction in fear of all of them's, the star, you know, where, where they're at that they don't need to list every single place they're going to be, there are these.
Traitors as well. So one of our advocates was able to write a stalking injunction for them and include, include them and their families because it was, these incidents got really scary. Like this person found out where they lived. So they were like threatening them, going to their homes and things like that. And the threat was posted then because of their employment. But after the stalking injunctions got granted, they were able to feel more protected and safe as well as protecting their families and the people they care about. Yeah, these are our last, this was our last case. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Any other questions?
I've had friends use you and it was invaluable. They loved it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, well, we really appreciate your time. Yes.
Oh, I have a question about your staffing and funding levels. I know that, you know, some of your positions are paid or partially paid by grants and how are we doing?
The grants are an added bonus. You know, they, they require some work to obtain those. With anything that is funded by a grant, there's always that a little bit of fear. You know, because like with this Bubba grant, the one that we're reporting on specifically, each grant cycle, it has been reduced a little bit. We have been very fortunate to have those differences covered for us by our department, by the city. And so, but there is always a concern. We never know what, what's going to happen. But right now we, we are stable and we feel like we're, we're well-covered and well-provided for.
Is your caseload appropriate for the number of people that you have?
It is right now. It, it fluctuates.
Right.
You know, it changes by season and by, I mean, sometimes it's just random. But right now we seem to be able to manage what we've got.
Can you go back to your numbers page, your accounts? Are these, for the nine-month period, are these year-over-year, are these numbers steady? Best, or best case coming down or are they, or the case, is the case load increasing? Or the city?
Again, it just, it varies. It really does depend on whether kids are in school. You know, like, like during COVID, we saw certain categories spike because of the, the situation. Domestic violence cases increased, child abuse cases increased. But I mean, it was easy to, you know, kind of figure out why that might be happening. At other times, they remain pretty steady. And so we do spend some of our time trying to do education and outreach. So we are reaching out to families where we see a case where maybe there's been a, an involvement with our officers, but there hasn't necessarily been violence. We try to, you know, make contact and see if they just, if there's any education or any resources that they would like ahead of time. So we are, we, we do see them fluctuating. But, you know, we're trying to do our best to educate and prevent as much as time allows.
Sorry, Kim, I, do you mind, I've got some, oh, no, I'm sorry. Sorry. We did a, we did a victim services audit last year from July 1st through June 30th. Whole number of cases and services provided and, and I apologize, I'm not sure if it, it correlates exactly with what, exactly these categories are. But, but those numbers, the services provided were 4,806 in that year-long period. In this nine-month period, 2020, it's gonna, it's gonna even out to almost the same. Maybe slightly less than I, I credit, I'll, I'll just give Kim and her team credit for, over the last year, she has built a, a, a team around herself and rebuilt a team and she's done a phenomenal job in keeping up with the services. So that's just some content on.
Thank you. Yes. Thanks again. Thank you, Kim, and thanks to all of you for your presentation and update.
Appreciate your support and you giving us this time.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a discussion regarding an amendment to the Parks and Rec master plan. This will be presented to us by one of our analysts, Kevin Martins.
Good afternoon, counsel. Want to say it's like this month marks my one-year anniversary here in Provo City. And I'm happy to finally be able to get to present to you guys. Today, I'm not going to ask you guys to pass a motion celebrating my one-year anniversary, but rather perhaps a motion to amend or to not amend, whatever you choose, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So let's dive right in. So quickly summary, summarize the proposal, give a little bit of background and then we'll go into discussion and perhaps motions. Alright? So in a nutshell, the proposal is on chapter 7.1 of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. There's a section that lists all the plans for each park. And under the plan for Slate Canyon Park, the proposal is to remove the second bullet point, which is regarding development in Slate Canyon Park. Uh, this, sorry?
But parcels maybe by what might be the park?
It's not a park.
It's not a park, yeah.
Oh, understood.
This is the area.
The area. Thanks for the clarification. This, this proposal is sponsored by Counselor Bogdan and Counselor Christensen. And so yes, let's move on to the background. So back in April 30th, 2025, Provo City made history. We had like the biggest neighborhood district meeting ever. There was like 279 people there. Believe it or not, it makes a perfect rectangle. But anyways, and even more impressive, 200 of the 279 made public comment, either through speaking in person, through Zoom comments. And we didn't have enough time to hear everyone. So a lot of people turned in some like written note cards for us to save later. And a lot of these comments, most of them had serious questions about Splash Summit development on Slate Canyon property. And a lot of them were just straight up against the idea altogether. So that happened. Moving forward to July 7th, 2025, we got a big announcement on the news. Slate Canyon is not for sale. And this shows to me that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, that the administration may show support for an amendment like this. And again, correct me if I'm wrong. Furthermore, I spoke with the Parks and Rec Director Doug Robbins and Foster Wataba about what they thought about this amendment. And they told me that not only that they did not have any plans or intentions to entertain any development ideas in the Slate Canyon Park, Slate Canyon area. They told me that they are, are planning to rewrite the Parks and Rec Master Plan next year, where they will already remove this bullet point from the plan. So regardless of what the council decides to do, this bullet point will not be in the plan next year. So it looks like they're also on support, which brings us today to our wonderful meeting today. Now.
Can you explain the color codes for us?
So yeah, if you look on the, like, the council map, everyone's district has like a color. So that's where I picked the colors from.
I'm glad we're citywide.
Charlie and chocolate.
That makes so much more sense. I couldn't figure out what was going on.
I'm so sorry. I just thought it was cute.
It's very creative.
So anyways, despite knowing that next year they're going to have a rewrite of the whole plan, I spoke with Counselor Bogdan and Counselor Christensen. And they told me that they would, they would still like to move forward with this amendment. Just to make it very clear that the city stance is that we don't want development in this part of the city. So which leaves us to the rest of the other five counselors, see what we want to do. So now it's time for discussion. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them and any motion, here's an example motion if you want, but do whatever you see fit.
Could you remind us how many acres is this, this area of the Slate Canyon designated for future parks?
100.
100 acres?
100? Oh, boy.
I'm in favor of voting for it now because I won't be here to vote for it later. So.
Well.
I would like to.
You might be.
What's that?
I'll, I think December 2nd, we can vote on this at the soonest.
It's so.
Uh, right. Yeah. I'm, I'm just saying, I guess I would, I am in favor of taking some action now instead of, instead of just waiting. Yeah.
I think it would be helpful though to see a map of the area that shows all the city-owned souls. And then the portion that is potentially designated for a future park. Because my understanding is that we own more property in that area than would be a park. And if we, if we change this, I mean, the, in the future, the city could still sell those bits that are outside of the park. This would not change that ability. It would not require, I think, the city to develop all of what the city owns there as a park, if that's not what the current plan is. But I just, I want to know what it, what it is.
I'd vote for it.
Yeah.
A lot of it's 30% slope too of the property. It's un, unbuildable, but still it's owned by the state.
But I, I just, it's all of the area that's in this Slate Canyon area. Like, do we have, I, I just want to know what the definition of the areas and what property the city owns there. Does that make sense?
Not on this presentation, but we can prepare it, send it out, email it.
And so I don't know how much, Mayor, of these slopes, the property is 30% slope. One part of this presentation that jumped out at me was this bullet point. Consider all city-owned land and select and evaluate select parcels that may be suitable residential development and utilize proceeds for park development. I mean, for years, the issue has been funding for this area. Is, is there really no parcel, no corner of this that, because when the residents, you filled that map of 270 people who came, their opposition was to, was to Splash Summit.
To Splash Summit, yeah.
How would they feel about identifying 10 of the 100 acres that could be sold and the proceeds used to build a park that has been long, they've been long waiting for, if it's residential and not commercial?
Having been there for this master plan, I think that's, I think, Councilman Garrett, you're going exactly towards a solution. How do you fund a 100-acre park? And so I think this was our consultant's attempt to say, maybe there is some possibilities in that land surrounding there to do that. Wasn't a primary choice, but I think it was at least looking at that option to see, we do not have, you know, a, a park of that size normally in a neighborhood area. So, and obviously the cost of that, I think it's some, depending on the amenities of that, could be something similar to what it costs to build the rec center. You know, it should be bond. So I think it was just throwing out an option there. Obviously, there was going to be a lot to it. And I don't think it's in anybody's intent to do that either, but it was a funding option because how do you fund a part of that?
Right. Well, I think what we've learned about is citizens don't care if it's ever made into a park. They'd rather it just be open space. So they'd rather than anything being developed, that it just be open space.
Yeah, I think based on the threat of a sale, that's what he said, but there's been a lot of times where the citizens, like, because we have master planned, we master planned the park where we did the trailhead, thought that would be a great time to master. We went back again and master planned that. So there, eventually when it's not under that, there'll be great interest in the park.
So opposing even a 10-acre, 60-home residential.
That's definitely the impression I've been given.
Okay. Okay. George. Uh, Counsel Bogdan.
So I want to point out, we had kind of a similar thing with bicentennial, right? You take Buckley Draw, you sell it off for housing, that money goes towards bicentennial park going through. And then look at the outcry at this point in time for what has happened. I don't think there is a public appetite at this point in time to even sell off any portion of Slate Canyon. Maybe in 20 years it might be, but right now at this point in time, just even from the outcry of Buckley Draw, I don't think there is any appetite to consider any of that at this stage.
Great. Um, well, one thought too is that, I mean, that, you know, if we, if we get down to the, well, if you get down to the difficulty of trying to figure out a fund, whatever you're going to propose, it's, the, the fact that that's not, that language is not there doesn't mean you can't consider something. But what I think it's really helpful is this protects the city so that there's not this pressure or invitation to developers to come and, you know, help us solve a problem, which was how that whole Splash Summit thing was framed, was that this is going to help. Help us solve a problem, which was how that whole Splash Summit thing was framed, was that this is gonna help the city solve its problem. And I think it's just better that we don't raise that question and and as the new net master plan gets drafted. Um, I think, I think these issues will get, you know, will get discussed and get sorted out. They're gonna have to figure out. Um, you know, I mean, that was, that was overwhelmingly strong opinion from the public that no development is better than any. Um, but if the, if Parks and Recs later feels like getting some more reliable data about that and doing some surveys. Uh, to answer that question a little more definitively, that's always an option too. But I I just think that that sentence um. Was like, was like bait. And I think it's better to just take it out so that it's not. It's not inviting that that kind of problem. It's kind of like the same problem we had with, you know, annexation coming in as a development. We can always decide that if we need to, but if you put that language, if you, we put in prohibitive language to say this is coming in as open space. Because we didn't wanna incentivize developers to say, well, you've got language here that looks like we, you know, we're helping you if we come in and build for you.
Okay.
Well, that, that's a persuasive argument to me. I think taking this language out doesn't change. Anything like the city's options or or the conditions, but by taking out um. That little tempting bait language, fine. I mean, I don't think any of us in this room have any. Appetite for selling this property for any reason whatsoever. And so in addition to taking out the bait language, this would just be a public statement to our people that we don't wanna do that.
Any other comments, input? Do I have a motion? Councillor McKay?
I'll make a motion that we take out the language.
Okay, and a second?
Well.
I think the motion needs to be to direct staff.
Staff to move forward in the process of amending the Parks Recreation Master Plan.
I'll second.
Whatever you'd like.
All right, we have a motion by councillor McKay with a second by councillor Handley. Um, and we'll take a vote. Councillor Bogdan?
Yes.
Councillor Winkle?
Yes.
Councillor Garrett, yes. Councillor Handley?
Yes.
And councillor McKay.
Yes.
So that motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Wonderful. Look, just wrapping up, uh, for future meetings, I'll be able to hear this in November twelfth, twenty twenty five in the Planning Commission. And we could pass this in a night meeting as soon as December second, assuming everything aligns, uh, but just something to stay tuned with. Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. When was the planning permission date? Okay. All right. We will now, there's no objection, we'll recess the Provo Municipal Council meeting and. And can and convene the RDA governing board by unanimous consent.
All right, so for our RDA business, we have a discussion regarding the potential sell of an RDA property. This will be presented by Melissa McNally, our RDA director. Excuse me, and the Harris Group.
Thank you. Uh, so I thought I would just do a little review of the staff report that I that I sent you all. Um. So in the spring, this this past spring, we were approached by the Harris Group, letting us know that they were interested in purchasing. A little parklet that is just uh south of the building that they own. Um, they were interested in purchasing the parklet to um. Expand uh venue space on the bottom floor of their of their building. And after just several discussions um with RDA leadership, uh, I went ahead. Thanks, Kevin. So that's the, that's the little parklet. Um, after several discussions with RDA leadership, I uh went ahead and ordered. An appraisal on the property. It came back at three hundred and fifteen thousand or um. A hundred and four, just over a hundred and four dollars per square foot. Yes, Catrice.
Can you clarify the picture real quick? So the places with the trees is all we're talking about, right? Who owns behind the trees?
Um, that's um owned by different entity entities. It's um parking for some of the the buildings to the south, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, um, so that appraisal um. Is based on uh comparable sales uh two in Salt Lake, four in the Provo Orum area. Um, the um, the Harris Group did think that that was a bit high. Uh, I think they're probably correct in that it is uh a bit high. Um, if you look at what was appraised, what the uh city property, our former city um hall property was appraised at in twenty twenty three. It was at sixty eight dollars per square foot. Um, and if you add it, or if you apply that valuation to this parcel, it would. Um, come in at two hundred and five, um, two ninety two thousand. Um, so the Harris Group did offer um twenty thousand for the parcel. And RDA leadership did not want to entertain that that proposal and advised um to come to a full RDA board. Um, to get feedback um for the possible sale of this property. So our, the Harris Group is here today. Oh, sorry, Becky.
Why, why did we purchase this? What's the history of it?
I think that it's um, it was part of a larger purchase with the the parking structure and perhaps. In what used to be the Wells Fargo Building, what the Harris Building is now, that the redevelopment agency was um involved in years ago. So that it predates me, but I would assume that that's what was left over after those things were built. So a little parklet was was built on that property.
And then my second question probably is more spot. How much would it cost to build a little parklet like that today within the downtown area?
Great question, depending on amenities and all that, I think the.
It's trees, grass, concrete, and two benches.
Yeah, a ton of amenities, but I don't. There's always those different challenges to all those things. Parklets are. Per square foot are are hardest to maintain, cause they're small, you know, and they go there, so it takes the time and travel to get there. So cost per square foot is high on that, but I don't know what that parklet costs.
Well, even downtown becoming more dense, parklets are. The open space that that nothingness is worth a lot to those residents.
Oh, I'm not arguing the merit. I think we all know where I stand on parks. But, you know, I just don't know the cost.
Yeah, cause if we were to build another one, we'd have to acquire property at whatever the going rate is.
And then aeration, right? We're gonna have to put sprinklers in, we're gonna have to do grass.
Tree planting, landscaping, all of this.
Concrete, benches that cost.
Our closest would be the plaza that we had on Third South and University.
And how much did that cost?
I don't know.
A lot.
It was, it went through CDVG.
Some of it, some of the funding for that was through CDVG. And just for your visual reference, a picture of the trees and the parklet. Sorry about that. Um, so the Harris, the Harris Group did um consult me. Uh, probably about a month ago, they're interested, still interested in purchasing this for um for their event space. Um, they did offer a higher dollar amount at ninety thousand. And they are here to make their presentation to you. Um, we have uh Carrie and Jason Harris. Um, if you don't have any more questions for me, then I'll invite them up to um do their presentation. Do you have any more questions for me?
Okay, thank you.
We have our presentation. One point of clarification, if I may, and then my wife Carrie should be sharing a little about the venue. And then where we think this piece of land could be of value to the city, to residents, to those that we'd be hosting events with. We ordered an appraisal as well when the first appraisal came back. Due to the zoning showing developmental use, and so the six comps, four in Provo, two in Salt Lake. The more higher ones were in Salt Lake that really pushed the price higher, showed all uh of those comps that had developmental purposes and zoning. We understand that the current zoning does not allow for development. It doesn't pass the city. Uh, ordinances, it's point zero six nine acres, just a little remnant piece of land. Doesn't have utilities, doesn't have parking, doesn't have access to have people go. And so we wanted an appraisal done that shows what the value would be without developmental possibilities. And so it actually came back to twenty five thousand on the appraisal. I think we shared that with the city council. I don't know if you guys received that. Um, so we offered twenty five thousand, heard the appraisal that came back as is with the current zoning. And uh, I think the response was that there wasn't interest perhaps. We weren't able to share why we thought there was the biggest discrepancy in value. And uh, so thank you for your time, I guess, to talk about it. So just wanted to clarify. We then came back and offered more and we'll kind of share what are our hopes and intents for the piece of property.
This is how I do it?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is what we're creating in downtown Provo, and we're very excited about it. We're creating a high-end luxury event space. Um, that in the many interviews and discussions I've had with. People in industry and people in the community, this is something that Provo needs, wants, um, is excited about. And we're excited about it too. Um, currently, it's on the first floor in the Wells Fargo Building. And it's adjacent to this little parcel of land. Um, which this, this just shows like these are really rough renderings. On that bottom slide, it shows there's two doors that are gonna go to the outside. And that's what we're hoping to do with this space, is create this outdoor indoor space. Um, so it's not anything that's gonna be developed. We're gonna keep it with the grass and we are going to add, which I think we have. Pictures of it.
So if I may, real quick, this is the south side here of the Wells Fargo Building, floor one. Acadia Spas used to be in that space. They relocated about a year ago, and so we've renovated the interior of that five thousand square foot. Um, interior of the building with the hopes of building out more of a European modern theme. And those doors on the southeast side would be the ones that would go out to the piece of land. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so um, again, we're, we're trying to create something that Provo doesn't have. We're trying to create an amenity for the community. But also to bring people into the community. When I've talked to even vendors and people in Salt Lake County, um. Like I brought people in through, we call them hard hat tours and like showing them the space, showing them the renderings. Um, we think we can get. A lot of the guests that are booking in Salt Lake, down even down to Utah County to book in this space. Because there isn't anything like that. They currently aren't booking down here. If you want an urban event center, you're gonna book in Salt Lake, but tho-. Those guests are the ones we're gonna try to get booking here. So it's different than the other event centers that are around, cause we know there's a lot of those around. Um, so that's why we think the outdoor space can add value and add value to the community. There's a lot of traffic that we can get coming into the community. I've even talked to a few event planners that do high-end destination weddings. That they're convinced this could be a destination wedding center and a place that could bring people in from outside the community even, from like other states, which. Again, would just boost the economy for the local area, and so we're excited about that. And this, this just shows what we're wanting to transform it into. Um, so, you know, we'll create some pavers. And like, this isn't perfect. It's an AI-generated image. We don't have the professional renderings done yet, but. Anyways, we just wanna create this beautiful space. It's a small space. Like, I don't know if you've seen this space. It's, it's maybe not even much bigger than this room. It's a very small space, so we're not talking about a huge space. We're not talking about a huge park, a small park, that we just wanna create an extra amenity. That will attract more people to the community. If you have an outdoor indoor space, it attracts higher, higher traffic into the space. So.
I met the building quite a bit. Obviously, our offices are there. We've loved being in Provo. We relocated in twenty twenty two on the third floor. And we're hoping to make that our long-term home. Uh, the the top floor became available six or eight months later, and so we were able to relocate. When the Ronys uh relocated to the River Woods, and so we're now in the the top space, but we we do have some ownership in all of the floors. Um, we've loved being in Provo. There's been some fun things that we've done around the community in Provo by being here. And to to me, when Acadia Spa is relocated, we weren't really, we didn't have any intentions to really utilize the space ourselves. But uh, we do an annual investor conference at the Grand America Hotel uh for our company. And in his historically, we paid about ninety to hundred twenty thousand for all of the setup. Reserving the hotel, the equipment, the music, the food, and the like, and we thought, why not just bring everything down to Provo? We'll put the money into our own space and then host the event here. And when Harris Investment Group isn't using the space for our own purposes, we can rent it out doing corporate events. Or uh wedding receptions. And so we're repurposing the space, but the value or the thought came up later. If we had this uh outdoor piece of land as part of it, those private events, we could cater both an indoor and outdoor experience. And so we have some friends and connections with some of the local restaurants. We're catering dinners, inviting people and guests to come utilize it. I believe actually will get used quite a bit more than what it currently gets used, where we don't see a lot of traffic and people. It's a. Small enough little plaza there. There's not really kids ever that come and play. There's people who will use the bench on occasion. Uh, for smoke breaks and then, you know, we see dogs on occasion that'll come. Um, so not, not a lot. So our thought was the economic benefit to Provo could be pretty meaningful with some of the job creations that this space could provide. Uh, you know, our hope is that with the work that we'd be performing, um, Carrie's already done a great job of networking with other. Wedding venue um planners. Uh, we have future bookings. Right now, it would be just for the interior, not including anything outside. The hope would be someday we could do something with the outside as well. But um, just with the current setup, there's no uh revenue for the the city. You you guys are responsible for maintaining it, uh, caring for it, and that would now become our responsibility. Because it's so close to our office, we want it to be a really nice space. Uh, we wanna incorporate a garden and. Trees and flowers and making it beautiful. Obviously, it's gonna be something that people are wanting to take pictures with, and we wanna cater to a nice dinner and. Event space, and so we would have a nice upgrade. Our goal isn't to develop it and go sky high as far as a developmental intent. We just wanna unify it and make it greater than what it is currently. And uh, I think that it would bring a lot of economic benefits to those around us. Um, we kind of listed out some of those here. We have some friends and connections with BYU and the sports program, so there's already conversations about events with the sports team. We know uh the Big Twelve would like to see more infrastructure in Provo as more fans are traveling to Provo. Uh, we wanna have an event space that would utilize the Provo Airport, have people stay in the hotels here. Enjoy the restaurants, get to know Provo and Provo downtown. We believe that this uh, you know, venue would create that opportunity. And everyone's benefiting from having those types of uh events thrown.
Yeah, thank you. Um, it looks really uh promising. What, I just a couple of questions. Um, what would be the wintertime plan for it? So how would your, or inclement weather plan? Do you, would you?
For events?
Have tent tents or warming things? Would you just say it's closed during the winter?
I mean, I I bet, we haven't discussed that, but I bet we would just close it for the winter, is my thought. Most people that are. Hosting an event in the winter don't expect to have an outdoor space available.
Yeah.
So we would just use the interior in the wintertime, and in case of inclement weather, it would close down and we'd just use the interior. The interior space is plenty big. We're estimating it can fit up to two hundred people for an event, so it's plenty big enough. Um, to host the events. It's just a nice amenity to add to the space, the indoor-outdoor.
That's something we still could figure out, but yeah, probably wouldn't.
I mean, even like this time of year, it's very beautiful, but it can get a little nippy and if you have little heaters or something. So the other question is about the public, uh, the sort of what it would look like facing this the street. I mean, is that, are you gonna have? So the other question is about the public uh the sort of what it would look like facing this the street. I mean, is that are you gonna have? Would people be able to walk into it uh without?
This doesn't show.
Or is this closed off to the?
Again, this is an A I generated like me throwing. But my my proposal would be, we wanna do uh.
That's the street face right there.
The street face right here and we do wanna do a gate to come in.
Okay.
We do wanna close it off to provide like this intimate.
Okay.
Garden fill like inside it. Um but then have a gate that you can access from the street side.
Okay, that makes sense. I I for some reason I had it the other way around.
Yeah, so this is this is where the parking, there's a parking um area underneath this wall. And then there's another building like on this side over here.
This is a picture of it this morning and this is just an A I version of it.
But the same view.
What we're trying to do with the exact same view. So this is looking north from the south side. And so this is backed up against the Alan's, the old Alan's camera building that's on the south side of it.
Um the parking behind it is the Alan's kind of a block.
Yeah, yeah, they own that parking lot behind it um currently, so. The sound barrier could be an issue as well, so that's why we thought it would create a little bit more of an intimate experience, but also minimize any sound. From the city in that space and and vice versa.
Yeah.
Was this the very highly controversial event space in planning commission like about a month ago?
I have no idea where a dance hall came up. Yes, this is a wedding.
It's just.
Corporate event center, yes, but something in the uh was it the architect?
I think the architects filed it under dance hall, which.
Yeah.
It is not a dance hall. Yeah.
I think that's all been resolved now.
Well, it's still not resolved with some of the the neighbors. Some of those that live up in the Wells Fargo building and some that have businesses close by. Um so yeah, that that's concerning as well.
Chuck sits on the H O A board. Yeah, we we have a meeting with them, so I think. We know the one person who's yeah has some questions and concerns, so I think that that will be resolved.
Were in clear discussions in that planning commission meeting about whether or not there would be an outdoor space. With that application. I wasn't in that meeting.
I don't recall.
You were part of that?
Saw that in so the they did no one pages.
Then no, I watched it.
Was it in the meeting also and I can't remember that?
Was it not in there? Okay, good. I I doubt it because we don't own this space yet, so. So. What I'm concerned about is losing public space. A few years ago, we had some really enterprising students, BYU students who are concerned about the parking issues in Joaquin neighborhood. And they're like, we could just, you know, raise money and build a parking structure. The city owns some land that we could do it on. I wanted to build a parking structure on Joaquin Park. Like that that you know, city owns this property, great solution, right? And here we have this little parcel of land, which you're correct, has basically no development potential. But it is functioning as a public, you know, as open space, it breaks up. The the streetscape as a pedestrian to not just have one building after another. There's a little refuge area that you can go and sit in. That is something that has current value. It's not necessarily economic value. But it's serving a real function in the community and the city. And while your proposal is to make that space nicer, you're also cutting it off from the community and it won't be. That open and public space anymore. Um like. That's that's my real concern, right, is giving up an asset. We just had to talk about, you know, our previous item is not wanting to sell. City-owned property that's slated for a park or adjacent to a park development. Um and that's that this is right here in in the middle of our little town. So that's a hard thing for me. And that's part of the reason I wanted it to come to the whole group, because I didn't want to shut you down. When I feel strongly about something, but I'm only one of seven. I felt that would be really unfair to you to to do that.
Thank you, Rachel. Do we have any sense? I mean, I had to look at him on Google Earth, which I'm a little embarrassed to admit because. I was just there actually. Um I was at the Wells Fargo Bank ten minutes before coming to this meeting and I rode my bike into the parking lot. I've never noticed it. I've never used it and I don't know if it is used, so I'm just wondering if my ignorance is. Symptomatic of other people. It it seems to me like a very much of an afterthought parklet. It's not something that strikes me as uh really prized amenity. I mean, I I I do think the. Any concerns that you have about any kind of precedent or something like that is certainly. Something to to think about, but I do think you could argue that this is. I mean, I guess we we would need to know a little bit more about the history of its creation to understand.
I think it's really a space holder.
Yeah, and if it well, if it had been like designated by somebody who donated it to the city, kind of like the Benus Park issue was, you know. As an open space, then that would create a problem, but if it's if it's an afterthought, it was. The unused space and it was just one way to keep it beautiful and you know, some nice benches for people. It doesn't seem to me that we're losing. Anything significant if we if we give it up, but.
Yeah, I mean, I I go to that park. But I don't, I'm only one little.
You're one of seven on the end, yeah.
Able to do any of those like little geofencing things to see how many cell phones ping in it to get a sense of usage. I. Because we had discussed that as a possibility to actually try to answer that exact question of how many people use this space.
Yes, I'm just gonna bring up. Downtown is getting denser and denser and denser. And we just looked at plans going along. The B R T route, right, of more high-density housing and the question will come before us of do we pre-zone that or not? And when we have a lot of high-end city housing, even little parklets like this are very, very valuable. It can be as tiny as tiny, but our city's growing and our space is shrinking. And I'm really hesitant to get rid of something like this for those reasons. We it it seems, you know, I'm I'm with Rachel. It seems like. Well, the city owns it, so I mean, with the news, the city owns it, so. We need room for Templeview High School. Let's just get it from the city and then where to where do we replace it for? What what do we replace it with? And we just discussed not having money, you know, to do hundred acre parks. And to not be able to replace this and to get, you know, even the value maybe. Ninety thousand, twenty five thousand. It's gonna cost us a lot to do another park on another space like this. And land downtown is just. It's not like the west side where there's a lot of it. So I'm really hesitant to even.
If I may make a comment.
Yes.
The the refuge comment. Um my hope would be refuge would be seeked at the nearby temple. And all the grounds that are open on Center Street. It's beautiful and a great space.
But it's not open all the time because it's private space and they do lock those gates in order to assert those property rights.
And.
I guess we could go to the courthouse, the county property. That's that's not locked.
Some space there too, across the street. Um we've talked about having a time lapse video. I don't think there's actually a lot of usage of the space. I'm there every day. I don't see people there unless they're taking their dog. And that's also very rare and so I would be happy to put up a camera. And show over multiple weeks the lack of usage because I don't think there's a lot of value the community's getting from the land currently. I actually believe that us putting something like this in and beautifying it. We're gonna bring more people to utilize the land than what it's currently being used for.
Yeah, and and really that's just the question of who is it beautiful for? People who pay to go to it. As opposed to a modest one that anybody can go to for free. Um another concern that I have is how it affects the streetscape from the sidewalk. Right? You know, if we have large blocks of buildings, if you've got a solid wall, you know, these are things that are. Which we're planning on doing a green wall. A green wall? Like if you see the arper vida.
Mm-hmm.
That's what the street will see is a row of arper vida, because I I agree.
Yeah.
I I like to see.
To feel good as.
I like to see and I I love trees, so that's what we're planning on planting in front of the fence we'll put up is a row of. Those are provided trees and they're really pretty. I think it breaks up the space. Provide something still beautiful for the community to see. While I agree with Jason, like whenever I go, I I've rarely seen anyone sitting in those benches or using that space.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment from the back room?
If you go to the microphone and tell us your name.
Thanks. You might plug that on. Hi, can you hear me? Hi, I'm starting with the idea of working with Jason and Kerry. Um I think one of the key benefits to doing something like this really is the economic benefit that the city can see. I mean, there's. Thirty downtown restaurants in the city. And I just went to get a pastry at the bakery up here at the Stone Colosseum, the convention center. And I feel like, you know, if we can bring in a thousand or two thousand. People to Provo that are gonna be here, you know, during business hours, after business hours. That's a lot of benefit to all of the businesses that are in the downtown core. And I do see so many businesses coming and going, the more traffic. Um that we can get in downtown Provo, it's good for all the businesses that are in here. And then I mean, we have a pretty good relationship with uh uh an owner that owns three of the downtown restaurants here. And obviously, I mean, it would greatly benefit him to have a catering job, you know, twice a week or whatever. To just see that economic traffic benefit come into the city, not to mention the hotels. Um when we have our events, uh we bring in investors from all over the country. And um you know, we have a lot of great families that will come here and stay for a few days, so. I just feel like the economic benefit of having a A and wedding reception center, conference center. It's not gonna compete with the real convention center that we have in Provo because they do huge events. We're talking hundred, two hundred people. But it's it's a really attractive space and I think the benefit for the community and the economic benefit is the real value, I think. Yeah.
Interesting. Um what about having it? What about having it open to the public? You're not doing an event? Having the space open to the public? Um that's something we haven't thought of. I mean, off the top of my head. I feel like if we're ins- installing like these nice fountains and chairs and tables. I mean, it is a little bit.
My concern would just be that people who are utilizing the plaza at the moment often are doing smoke breaks.
Or.
I wouldn't want cigarette butts and that dog.
Are you allowed smoke that close to a building? Is that legal?
It's a distance from an entrance and so if those are entrances, then that would change it.
People often will sit right here, have a smoke break. That's the majority of the use I've seen actually is smoke breaks.
Honestly, I don't know where they go to smoke if this goes away because there are all of those entrances and. I don't know that there's a space in that whole block space that they could go if this is taken away. Not that I'm supporting smoking, just thinking about a practical effect.
Yeah, just a moment. We've got counselor here.
I apologize. I didn't notice that's what was happening.
You're you're welcome to use that, however you want. Um I wondered if you had, if there's. If there's not an appetite to give up control of the land, to sell the land. Have you considered um a lease with the city where we, it wouldn't resolve the issue of. Open public space, but we do have other open space downtown. But um we would get the economic development as a city. And um but then still control the land in the event that um the business changes hands or something doesn't work. The city could maintain control of the land. Have you considered entering into a lease?
Yeah, that could be an option. My only concern would be us putting a meaningful amount to purchase the land. And then all the upgrades that would go into it. That would be where my reservation to then opening it up to the public when it wasn't in use. What happens to any valuables that are within it and now I have to try to.
You mean really?
I know. So that was why we were thinking we would try to minimize any traffic from the public. It doesn't mean that we couldn't. I just I worry about what that would be if. You know, we'd we'd be sinking a couple hundred thousand dollars, I think, between the purchase and upgrades. To making it, you know, more beautiful. So the lease, I would be interested on what that would look like and how much money are we still putting into it? On behalf of the city, getting the value from it.
Um Bunderson says that to do, could get new land. To do a new park in downtown on a U dot road with um it would be about four thousand.
Who said that?
Bunderson.
John Bunderson.
Who's in Parks Rec.
Yeah.
How large should the land?
The same thing. Yeah. Yes.
Well, one of the things that the challenges that that we face, and I kind of act as the. Property manager for the Harris Building, Wells Fargo Building and the parking garage behind. Is that we have a challenge in what what happens when we have trespassers? When we have vagrants that come and, you know, wanna sleep in the um stairwell of a parking garage. Um and that happens a lot. It's especially, I was worried about that when we had the spa there and we had, you know. Fifty million coming in every day and last thing I wanna do is walk over somebody sleeping on the floor there. And we have, we have security there now, but you know, K J I've even seen vagrants hanging out, you know, in apartments here. And what we're trying to do is is upgrade it so it would be a place that's kind of protected and. We, you know, you you want to, there are vagrants in downtown Provo. We want to have them not in the public spaces and and that would be a part of this whole process of just making this a. A nicer kind of an upgraded space that um you know, we we would see the economic benefit from.
Yeah, although it it sounds like there's. Our city will benefit from your economic development of the event center, whether there's an outdoor space component or not. Thank you for for that. We appreciate that. Um. I am intrigued by Gary's suggestion of a lease so that if your event center. Decided to move to a different location, then that property would come back to the city essentially, so that we'd be able to reopen it again as a parklet. Yes, Melissa.
Hi, um Cody just sent some metrics of how often it's visited. I forwarded them. To Kevin Lee's email. They're just screenshots, so they're kind of, they're a little blurry, but.
All right. See what we thought, but carry on.
So the government is tracking your cell phones.
Tell how many people ping in a space.
And if I may just.
I'm sure it's the dog part.
You you never know. I understand things change, but I think we're committed to Provo for a long time. We have a home that's close by. All we're big BYU fans and donors to the university. This space is conducive to the clientele that we represent. We're not going anywhere. We'll. Be in this building until I pass away most likely and so the likelihood of me changing where our location is 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 very unlikely, so. I know things change and that could happen, but we're. We spent way too much money on this building and in the building to ever relocate, so.
I'm glad that you're here for the.
We love it. Yeah, we love it here, honestly. My kids love it, so we're we're committed.
A different question, like how many event spaces can we support here? So.
Yeah.
We believe we're in a different category of events. So I've actually toured quite a few of the ones around in downtown Provo. And we are trying to be a different category where the kind of guests that we are booking are actually different and not. We're not competing with them. We're competing with more of the event spaces in Salt Lake County. Um.
A park seat.
Okay. Kind of space, this is.
It's a European modern.
Wait, yeah, it's a high-end and I would argue. One of the few high-end event spaces in Utah County. All right.
But the style is quite a bit different than the others that are high-end, so it is different as far as the offering.
Also, we're the capital of weddings, so I think we can absorb quite a. Does this save you a year?
That's what it says. That was three K. That's that every year.
Ooh, look at that.
It says last twelve months. Yeah, it was the.
How fun he was able to track something.
Eight visits a day.
Alright, so not our most utilized park asset is is what we're hearing there. Alright, so not our most utilized park asset is is what we're hearing there.
I believe those were our employees probably checking on it regularly.
Or us, we've actually brought.
We go quite a bit, just to take pictures.
Like I've been bringing vendors through.
Alright, so we we're we're at our time situation now. We we should entertain a motion. Is there interest in the R D A board to pursue? Selling this and working on agreement. We don't even have to necessarily decide on the price right now, but just to indicate whether or not. Um, there's appetite to to sell this asset.
For me, I think your best option would be to look into a lease. Option, a possibility of leasing from the city and maybe coming to some terms that would allow the city to retain ownership. But still give you use of the property. That's how I.
I know we've been trying to divest from some of our shared asset things like parking garages and stuff like that. Would we run into any concerns with that on the city administration side?
I don't think so, since this is such a different asset from those others. Yeah, really just consider the value that each space versus developed, so just proposal.
Okay. Alright, well, is that a motion?
I'll make I'll make a motion to not sell the.
But to to keep open the possibility of some other way in which.
Well, sure. I mean, that can be up to them. But I think the issue on the table is whether or not the city would want to sell.
Okay.
I would second that.
Alright, we'll take a vote on this. McKay. I apologize.
I I think those numbers are anemic and so I I won't. I'm more, I'm open to the conversation about selling it. I mean, there's several spots there that are zero. Uh, there are a couple of spikes. I don't know, just don't think it's an amenity.
It looks like maybe Valentine's Day.
I would I would have a completely different feeling if it really were, you know, a beloved place. I just don't think that's what we're talking about here, but. That's.
Any other? Alright, now the voting, McKay.
Do not sell it?
Yes.
Yes.
Handley?
No.
Garrett?
Yes.
Whipple is yes and Bogdan?
Yes.
Alright, so the vote on. The motion to not sell the property at this time passes by four to one. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
And there's no objection, we will now adjourn the R D A governing board and re-condeem as the Provo Municipal Council by unanimous consent.
The council will now consider a motion to close the meeting.
Yeah, right, alright.
Gary representing our.
He's got more hair than I do. Yeah, I understand that there's a couple of topics that would statute care for competence and litigation, so it would be appropriate to do that at this time.
Well, I think that we close the meeting for the reasons that Mr. Millward Millward stated.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion to close with a second, Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
And Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Alright.